All right. I'd like to convene the meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission for Thursday, September 10, 2020. It's approximately 10:03 a.m. Meeting called to order, and could we rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moss is absent. Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
Here. Just barely.
And Mr. Howgie?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and social distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered through a completely remote and virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to the start of the meeting should be prepared to use the Zoom platform. You may join virtually online by clicking on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099, or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 920-50940254. Please press pound six to mute yourself. If you would like to make a public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page in Zoom. If you are calling in, please press pound nine, or star nine, sorry, star nine, to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the, for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. At this time, if we could have the planning directors report.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Abaldi with the Planning Services Division. I think I'll first start just with an overview of what's happened at the Board of Supervisors' recent meetings. There's been a number of items from planning that have, have been before the Board. Sarah Winery was, that was an appeal to the Board that was considered on September 1. The Board denied the appeal and upheld the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Same for the Wilson Minor Land Division. The Board denied the appeal and upheld your recommendation. What, pardon me? I believe so, and there were no changes to conditions or any part of the project as part of that. So just as recommended, they got approved. The other appeal that was heard was the Lakeside Redevelopment Project. That was actually continued off calendar. The developer has interest in looking at a hotel project on that site, and so the hearing was continued for 90 days for them to meet with county staff and see if we can help facilitate that in some way. And then, after almost a 20-year effort, the Board of Supervisors finally adopted the Placer County Conservation Plan. So there's a number of approvals that are still required for that. I know they have to go before the Lincoln City Council, Placer County Water Agency, and SPARDA, and then I think there's also some final approval by the state and federal agencies. So although approved by our Board, it may not go into effect for another 30 to 60 days. But a huge milestone, a lot of kudos to Greg McKenzie and county staff that was previously with the county that worked on this for so many years, so a hu- huge accomplishment. And then, let's see, what else? So future board meetings, September 22, the Board's going to consider the Sabre City State Subdivision, which your commission recommended approval of. And then, on October 6, the Board's going to be considering the final zoning text amendment that you guys heard over a year ago. There were, they were broken out into three sections, so that will be going to the Board, as well as the urgency ordinance, which your commission did not review, but that is, was put in effect due to the COVID that allowed the businesses to move their retail and restaurant operations outdoors into parking areas during this pandemic. It's already been extended once by the Board, so we're going to go back again in October to see what direction they want to provide on that. And then, last hearing, I believe we had the Kettuna Residential Care Home that your commission approved. That was appealed, so that will be scheduled for, for in the coming months. So on to Planning Commission. Our next meeting is going to be September 24. That's going to be our first in-person meeting since this pandemic, and so we're going to have a start time of 4 o'clock for that meeting. The main item on that agenda is the Hidden Falls Expansion, and so that actual item is going to start at 5 o'clock on September 24.
How are you going to manage the crowd?
So we're limited to, you know, 25% capacity, so we'll be following all the, you know, social distancing protocols. We'll be opening up this room to include the Cypress Room behind. We'll have chairs set up, you know, distance apart like we need to. And then, in this room, probably every other row will be blocked off, and then spatial distancing in between those.
So it's first come, first served sort of thing?
Right. And we're, we're still going to be doing the Zoom platform, so folks can still remotely call in. We're still going to be doing the reservation line. So all the means that allow for the public to participate in the meeting, we're going to, we'll have all those venues still open.
So 25% in this room, what would that be?
You know, I, I don't have a number on that.
I might suggest that, just so we don't have angry people if they can't get in, I want to also some chairs out in that area, and they could watch it on the screen outside.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So we, we are planning on having audio outside. We don't, we want to keep the lobby free, just because the lobby's not a large area. But right outside the Cedar Building, we do intend to have a speaker out there so folks, they can, you know, hear the meeting in progress.
So bring your lawn chairs and sit out there and listen.
That would be acceptable.
Thank you.
So anyway, so we're getting, staff is getting geared up to accommodate that for September 24. And then, our next meetings in October, we do have items for those agendas so far, October 8 and October 22. Just nothing confirmed, but we will have meetings in October. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
May I ask a question, EJ?
Yes.
If you said it, I apologize. I was looking over, looking, reading the agenda and listening to you, but for the meeting on the 24th, are you saying that you, you are requesting all of the commissioners to be present?
No, so the commissioners can still participate remotely?
Can still zoom in?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted clarification, because I, because I may, I mean, I'm going to participate in the next meeting, but I may be asked to do it remotely. That's all. So thank you.
Yep, that'll work. Thank you.
All right. I will now open the public comment for any matters that are not on the Planning Commission agenda. Again, if you're on the phone, star nine raises your hand, or if you're on Zoom, there's a raise hand feature. And Sue, is there anyone raising their hand? All right. We don't have anyone raising their hands, so with no other callers, public comment for matters not on the agenda is now closed. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioners like to remove the one item from the consent agenda? Nope. Does anyone from the public want to remove the item from the consent agenda? And we will wait to see if anyone raises their hands, the raise hand function on Zoom, or the star nine on your phone. No, okay, no one wants to make a comment, so at that point...
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Cannon with the second?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so first with Mr. Nader, second by Mr. Cannon, and a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our timed item, which is a third-party appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a minor use permit to allow the Placer Vehicle Inspection Center. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press pound, star nine if you are calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Kelly will be presenting this item. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. Good morning, Commissioners. The item before you this morning is a third-party appeal of a previously approved minor use permit and design review agreement for the Placer Vehicle Inspection Center project. I will be referring to that project as the Placer VIC for my report. The project site is located in unincorporated Rockland. It is west of Highway 65, north of Sunset Boulevard, east of West Foothills Boulevard, and south of Athens Avenue. The project site, shown in red, is within the Sunset Area Plan area. I do want to note that when this map was enlarged, this section moved. The project site is actually right here in the purple area. The project site's land use designation is light industrial, and the Placer Ranch specific plan is adjacent to the west, shown in gray. The zoning of the project site in the adjacent parcel to the east is light industrial with a combining design corridor. Parcels to the north are zone entertainment mixed use and business professional to the south. The zoning to the west is the Placer Ranch specific plan, and the zoning adjacent to the project site is park and open space. The 130-acre project site is currently undeveloped. The Placer Gold Industrial Park is located adjacent to the east of the project site. The site is characterized by a flat to gently rolling terrain and supports a mix of native and non-native grassland and rudderal vegetation. Aquatic habitat and wetland habitat also occurs on-site primarily within the southern portion. This slide and the following slide contain photos of the existing conditions of the site. These photos were taken from Sunset Boulevard looking north, and they demonstrate the project's on-site aquatic resources and grassland habitat. These photos were taken from Athens Avenue looking south and Cincinnati Avenue looking northwest. These photos, again, are demonstrating the existing undeveloped character of the site. The project includes a minor use permit and design review agreement for a vehicle storage and distribution center for Carvana LLC, which is a nationwide vehicle online retailer. Of the 130-acre project site, approximately 118 acres would be developed for a 190,342 square foot vehicle inspection building, accessory structures including a guard booth, fuel island, and car wash, vehicle storage for up to 10,490 vehicles, employee parking, stormwater detention basins, landscaping, and perimeter fencing. The inspection center is proposed at the north central portion of the site and would be T-shaped, and the stormwater detention retention basins are located at the north and southern ends of the project. The southernmost area contains a tributary to Pleasant Grove Creek, as well as a FEMA floodplain, and this area would remain undeveloped. The future alignment of Placer Parkway crosses the northwest corner of the parcel. The facility would be used to receive, inspect, conduct minor repairs, store, and distribute vehicles to customers. Approximately 850 people would ultimately be employed at the facility. This facility would not be open to the public, would not contain a retail showroom, and would be accessed via two entrances on Cincinnati Avenue. This slide and the following slide contain generic renderings of the inspection building, and while not specific to the Sunset Area Plan site, they demonstrate what the ultimate aesthetics of the buildings would be. They would be prefabricated metal buildings. They would be gray color with black trim and black canopies and standing, standing seam roof and roll-up doors. This would be the frontage, what it would appear to be if you're looking at the project site from Cincinnati Avenue, and again, this is showing what the inspection building would look like. A preliminary landscape plan was also submitted for the project, and this landscape plan is just one page and shows what the overall landscape would appear to be. This landscape plan is also compliant with the water-efficient landscape ordinance. The CEQA requirements for this project included a environmental consistency checklist prepared in accordance with CEQA Guideline Section 15183, which is a streamlined environmental review for projects consistent with a community plan and previously certified EIR. The Placer VIC project was reviewed for consistency with the Sunset Area Plan EIR, and was prepared in accordance with Section 15183, and the purpose of the checklist is to demonstrate the project's consistency and identify if the project would result in any new, previously unidentified environmental effects. In support of the checklist, several reports and studies were prepared and reviewed, including an air quality greenhouse gas emissions report, a traffic memorandum, a sewer memorandum, a drainage report, a cultural resources report, and a biological resources report. The checklist demonstrates the Placer VIC project is consistent with the Sunset Area Plan EIR. This project was approved at the July 16, 2020 zoning administrator hearing. At that hearing, the zoning administrator determined that the project complied with the Sunset Area Plan EIR and would not result in new or more significant impacts than those previously analyzed in the Sunset Area Plan EIR. Two members of the public provided comments opposing the project citing concerns with the project's biological impacts, drainage concerns, and alleging further environmental review was necessary. On July 27, 2020, an appeal was received from Michael Garabedian on behalf of Placer County Tomorrow. The appeal raised multiple points summarized thusly. The appellate alleges that the staff report and checklist have an insufficient description of the affected environment and lacked maps, figures, and wetland delineations. The appellate alleges that the hearing body should have been the Planning Commission and not the zoning administrator, and that the entitlement should have been a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle and transportation equipment land use and not a minor use permit. The appellate alleges that the environmental checklist is inadequate in demonstrating just how the Sunset Area Plan EIR addresses the Placer VIC effects, and also alleges that the sewer collection system, fire hazard, drainage, and impacts to grassland carbon sequestration were either inadequate or not documented. In response, staff notes that the checklist did include maps, figures, and demonstrates the location of the project site. This is from page four of the checklist. This is from page five. The site plan was included in the checklist on page 11, and was also included as an attachment to the staff report. The staff report and the checklist describe the existing conditions and the project's effects adequately. A biological resources report was prepared for the project and is discussed in the checklist and the staff report. The biological report was included as appendancy to the checklist and was included upon request. This slide is one such figure that demonstrates the figures that were included with the biological resources report and clearly show the proposed project overlaying on the on-site resources. The maps and figures from that biological resources assessment have been included with the Planning Commission staff report as attachment C. The applicant alleges that the project requires a conditional use permit for motor vehicles and transportation. However, staff notes that that use, as defined in the zoning ordinance, is a manufacturing land use, and this, the Placer VIC project, is not proposing manufacturing of any kind. The primary use of the site would be for vehicle storage, and minor repairs conducted on-site would be subordinate to the primary use of vehicle storage and distribution. Storage and distribution is allowed in the light industrial zone district with approval of a minor use permit. The appellate alleges that the hearing body should have been the Planning Commission and not the zoning administrator. The zoning ordinance defines minor use permits as having original jurisdiction within the zoning administrator. Though the zoning administrator may refer projects to your commission, he did not do so because the project was reviewed under a recently adopted area plan, and the zoning administrator found that the project is consistent with that plan. The magnitude of the project and the project's anticipated impacts were assumed in the Sunset Area Plan. The appellate alleged the checklist is inadequate in demonstrating just how the Sunset Area Plan EIR addressed the Placer VIC project, and the checklist contains a detailed consistency determination outlining every applicable policy and mitigation, and mitigation measure, and includes a discussion of just how the project is compliant with those policies and mitigation measures. The purpose of the checklist was to demonstrate how the EIR addresses those effects, and this has been done, been done for each resource area as required by CEQA. The environmental impacts of the, of the proposed project are thoroughly identified and addressed in the checklist. A sewer study was prepared for the project and determined the existing sewer infrastructure is adequate to serve the proposed project. Potential wildfire hazard impacts were reviewed as required by CEQA, and the project was reviewed by Placer Fire. The project is required to comply with Sunset Area Plan policies for firefighting funding mechanisms, as well as California Building Code and Fire Code building requirements, and the project will also be installing fire hydrants throughout the site. Regarding drainage, the project is proposing to install two large drainage detention basins, and the Sunset Area Plan requires new development to mitigate increases in stormwater volume to retain the 100-year, eight-day design storm depth of 10 and 3/4 inches. A drainage report was prepared for the project and concluded that the proposed basins may or exceed the standards defined in the county's Stormwater Management Manual. Carbon sequestration, including potential impacts from land conversion, are not required to be reviewed under CEQA. Therefore, there is no discussion of impacts to carbon sequestration. Additional explanatory material was provided to staff from the appellate and included a Section 401 permit application, attachments and figures to the permit application, and three figures from the project's biological resources assessment. The material submitted does not provide any information that was not previously analyzed, nor does the material demonstrate the need for further analysis. Six public comment letters were received prior to today's hearing. Letters were received from three community groups, including Placer County Tomorrow, Alliance for Environmental Leadership, and Defend Granite Bay. Three additional letters were received from individuals. All correspondence received is, is in opposition to the project, and all letters request that the Planning Commission uphold the appeal. The letters cite concerns with biological impacts, specifically to loss of vernal pool habitat, requests that an EIR be prepared for the project. They say that the project would result in visual blight, that the Sunset Area Plan is under litigation, that the project conflicts with Sunset Area Plan goals, and conflicts with state regulations for vernal, for vernal pool protection. The letter received from Placer County Tomorrow further takes issue with the previously adopted Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch specific plan, and the Placer County Conservation Program. The letter also raises multiple concerns with county entitlement and hearing processes, and raises concerns about flood impacts. In response to the comments, the project's specific CEQA analysis prepared for the project is an environmental conformity checklist. The impacts to vernal pools and other biological resources are identified in the checklist. Mitigation in the form of NLU fee payments is a standard mitigation mechanism and is not unique to the proposed project. The project's design review agreement demonstrates the proposed project would be consistent with Sunset Area Plan design policies. Though the Sunset Area Plan is under litigation, an injunction has not been filed that would, that would prevent an application from moving forward. The checklist and zoning administrator's staff report include detailed discussions of consistency with Sunset Area Plan goals and policies. The project has been reviewed in accordance with all applicable local, state, and federal laws. The letter from Placer County Tomorrow dated September 9 raises issues irrelevant to the Placer VIC project. The Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch specific plan, and Placer County Conservation Program are adopted programs and plans, and an appeal of this minor use permit does not affect those programs. The letter raises concerns with county processes that have no bearing on the project. Staff recommends that your commission deny the third-party appeal filed by Michael Garabedian of Placer County Tomorrow, determine the potential impacts of the Placer VIC are within the scope of the analysis of the 2019 Certified Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch specific Plan EIR pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15183, uphold the zoning administrator's approval of the Placer VIC minor use permit, PLN 20-00053, subject to the conditions contained herein to the staff report, and lastly, uphold the zoning administrator's approval of a site design agreement. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant team is also available. Thank you.
I do have one question, Callie, and if you don't know the answer, maybe Phil does. When, do you know what the timing is for Whitney-Lasser Parkway's connection to Foothill?
I don't know that. I don't know if Phil is able to speak to that or not.
I don't, I don't know the timing of that either, Callie?
I was under the impression that the first phase of that, at least the Placer Parkway was underway, or at least was getting prepared to go underway. So that's just another transportation connection, obviously, off of 65 into that area, which is, obviously, with the volume of activity that's going to happen here, would just help relieve some of the pressure.
All right. With that, we would like to have the appellate make their presentation or comment. And Mr. Garabedian, how long will your presentation be? It looks like you're on mute, so we need to take you off mute.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to...
You're back on mute. We'll get through the technology here.
How about this?
There, it's working.
Well, thank you.
So first of all, how long will your presentation take?
I'd like seven to 10 minutes to start, and then to come back before the closing of the hearing, and that would be for another 10 minutes approximately, understanding that we are the appellate who have brought this and are in the position of an applicant, essentially, before the commission, not a commenter. Thank you.
We understand. The staff took about 13 minutes, so what we'd like you to do, I think your five or seven minutes to be, make a presentation is good typically, though. We'll allow the applicant to respond. What I can do then is open it up for the commission to have questions of you, the staff, or the applicant for the project, and we'll see where we go from there. So your time begins now to make your presentation.
And how much is this block of time?
You had told me approximately up to seven minutes, so let's...
Seven to 10 minutes, yes.
Up to 10 minutes would be fine.
Thank you. I'm Mike Garabedian. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm for Placer County Tomorrow. We've submitted memos that were mentioned on July 19 to the administrator, the appeal notices memo on July 27, August 26 explanatory material, and the partial response to the staff report and briefing yesterday. This project takes us deep into our research and writing on the Carvana appeal, including as a precedent for the Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch specific plan. Carvana, as presently proposed before you, suggests that the only acceptable feature for the, future for the Sunset Area Plan is repeal of it. But this is up to you. It's up to how you manage this and do things such as recommending to the, that the, there be a transportation study for this, as advised, and what was just discussed too, is another, another example, the carbon sequestration of grasslands, which hasn't been addressed. It's something that should be done discretionarily if indeed is not required. So, but regardless, we want to frame this as a bureaucratic problem that starts in an unfriendly way to the public with the Environmental Review Committee, which is chaired by the staff person who just spoke. But the focus is on, the report has many pages describing the project, as you would expect for a use permit, proposal, proposal. But it has but one sentence on the natural resources that she basically read. And it says, "The southern portion of the project site consists primarily of non-native natural annual grasslands, with scattered patches of coyote brush and Himalayan blackberry. This also includes vernal pools, seasonal wetlands, and seasonal marshes." It then goes on to describe in a map the federal waters of the United States, which are part, a very small part, that federal definition compared to the state definition, and what is actually there on the ground is inadequate, of course. Now, the, the staff report and the, as far as we can see, it reflects a return to attitudes that the United States had before 1891, that wetlands are worthless, having value only to be drained, filled, and developments. But wetlands are, wetlands and vernal pool prairies are natural resources providing many ecosystems... many ecosystem services that are essential for all ecosystem services. And this includes these services with habitat for wildlife, including fish and fisheries, salmon and steelhead that are dependent on the waters from this area, food, food since time immemorial for indigenous people and us in agriculture, water quality, quality cleansing for wildlife and downstream, nutrient cycling, soil formation and retention, production of atmosphere, atmospheric oxygen, as I mentioned, carbon sequestration. In one sentence, ecosystem services are necessary for the production of all services. Now, these values are lost from, and public involvement are missing from our bureaucracy of meetings that are absolutely relevant to this. There's the Development Committee, a pre-development meeting, the Environmental Review Committee, the Development Review Committee, DRC, Design Review Committee, zoning administration, and finally, we get to you. We seem to need a natural resources committee. I mean, how do you manage natural resources? You manage it by looking at what it is. You map it. You describe it physically. You present that to the decision-makers. It hasn't been done to you. You know, there's a human history, natural history, the ecology there. Think of forests, for people to understand that more readily, that these are natural resources we need to, to manage. Through, at least the way it's interpreted so far, the Sunset Area Plan means we don't have to manage these resources, we don't have to take care of them and, and use them as, there's a great example, an excellent example during the Sunset Area Plan process. A citizen's smart growth plan was proposed. One of the first things that did was go through a presentation of the ecology and natural resources in the area, great deal, mapping them, explaining them, defining them. Then, based on that, proposed a development plan that largely avoided the soils, the hardpan soils out there, the wetlands, the area that is so expensive to develop that the only way this kind of thing gets developed in the county is with huge subsidies, such as the Placer Ranch specific plan paid for by the taxpayers and the Sunset Area Plan. So, so at this, at this point, I think with that introduction, we, we hope that, you know, there is at least one member of the Planning Commission who understands, deeply understands what natural resources management and what it takes to do that. And we feel it's your job in this hearing to get that done and get away from sweeping, essentially sweeping the wonderful natural resources out there under the rug. Look forward to getting back before you in a little bit. Thank you for this opportunity. Greatly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. At this time, the applicant, do you have comment or response?
Mr. Chairman, this is Todd Ward with Carvana, the applicant. We're actually sort of co-applicants along with the current owner because we are working through the wetlands mitigation in conjunction with them to make the site developable for our proposed project. First off, I'd like to thank you for the time this morning, and as a, as a planner myself, I, I take everything that's being considered here very seriously, and want to make sure that we do things appropriately according to Placer County, the state of California, and of course, federal rules and regulations as it, as it applies to the wetlands, the vernal pools, and everything else. We have taken great pain to make sure that we have met the checklist, that our consultants have done things right, worked with county staff throughout the entire process to make sure that we have not dropped the ball in any area. As you can see in the disturbed area, we did leave the area to the south where there is a blue line stream, and some wetlands on the other side of that stream unimpacted. Of course, as you know, with the wetlands mitigation, that does not mean that wetlands are simply vanishing within Placer County, but those wetlands will be transferred for no net loss throughout the county to maintain that critical habitat. It is simply our contention, sir, and the members of the commission, that we have went through the process appropriately. We look forward to being a new corporate citizen in Placer County and getting going.
Thank you very much. At this time, let us bring us back to the commission for questions of the applicant, the staff, and the appellate. No questions? All right. Then, at this point in time, it's time to open up the public comment, and again, raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on your phone if you want to make a comment. And Sue, I'll let you coordinate this.
Three minutes?
Oh, yes, it is three minutes per comment.
All right.
Give us a few minutes here while the calls are transferred in.
Why are you guys on short sleeve shirts? It's freezing.
Good morning. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Warren. I'm representing the Alliance for Environmental Leadership, an organization of 14 civic and environmental groups in Pacha County. I'm speaking to request that you uphold the appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of the Carvana project on 111 acres of wetland and vernal pool complex at the gateway to the Sunset Area. The basis for the appeal is that the Carvana project impacts are such that a project-level EIR is necessary for SEQA compliance. There are also other complicating issues that support the appeal and that demand your attention lest the county become embroiled in additional cost and litigation. You may know that the Sunset Area Plan approval, which was done in February 2019, is currently in litigation with the Center for Biological Diversity. To allow the Carvana project to ride the coattails of that EIR, which may not prevail in a court hearing, is not good business practices for the county, and it provides uncertainty both for the county and for the developer. The Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch EIR cornerstone was California State Placer University. You may or may not know that California State University released on July, on July 9, 2020, a report saying that there will be no new universities in the CSU system. And in fact, Placer County was not even among the university sites that were considered in the study. But in any case, CSU will be building no more universities, and so it puts into question the validity of the EIR for the Sunset Area, which had no project alternatives that did not include a California State University. This project has already gone to the State Water Quality Control Board. That was on, on August 21st of this year, the State Water Quality Control Board refused to allow, refused to issue a 401 permit to spill wetland pending developer production of, of project-level EIR. As you know, this project's riding on the coattails of the Sunset Area Plan, which is a programmatic level EIR rather than a project-level EIR. On September 8th, the American Cancer Society released their State of the Air Report, and we have, this project, which is going to put 10,039 cars on a parking lot over vernal pools, and 190,000 square foot fueling and repair facilities for automobiles and trucks.
Ms. Warren, could you wrap your comments?
We have no idea what the air quality impact this project will have.
Ms. Warren, your time is up. Thank you.
Already the project...
Ms. Warren, your time is up. If you could wrap it up in just a couple of seconds?
Yeah. We already do not need COG air quality measures, and we don't know what this project will contribute to our air quality problems, and if we do not need the measures of COG, the county's at risk of losing transit funds.
Ms. Warren, your three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
I'm just going to conclude with, this project is a gateway to the Sunset Area Plan for which the Placer County had a vision for primary ways to adopt...
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Scott Johnson. I've been a property owner and business owner in Placer County for, it'll be said, one year this month, and I'd like to ask the Placer County Planning Commission to uphold Placer County Tomorrow's appeal of the zoning commissioner's, zoning administrator's decision approving the Carvana project. And my reasons are, number one, because the Sunset Area Project is in litigation, number two, the project is in conflict with the goals of the Sunset Area Plan, and I have read that plan and commented on the EIR for that plan. Number three, it requires a project-level SEQA analysis for this project, and number four, in conflict with the state policy that protects vernal pools. The uses that are proposed ought to be located in existing urbanized areas where there's a myriad of abandoned auto dealerships, big box stores, shopping malls, and all those have an abundance of heat-generating surface parking lots that adversely affect our climate. They blight our county, and they generate no tax revenue because they're vacant. So breaking ground and paving over 111 acres of precious carbon-sequestering vernal pools is simply a poor use of critically endangered wildlife habitat. So just to reiterate, I'd like the commissioners to uphold an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision. I believe Carvana uses are inappropriate on sensitive wetlands, and that a project-level EIR should be prepared, and Carvana should redevelop all the existing abandoned auto dealerships or big box stores or shopping malls rather than breaking new ground and paving over, over 100 acres of precious vernal pools. So thank you for allowing me to make comment.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to go to the Zoom meeting.
Ms. Phillips, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Karen Phillips, and I live in Granite Bay. I support Placer County Tomorrow's request to appeal the zoning administrator's approval of the Placer VIC project. The runoff from the proposed facility, especially in the southern portion, will negatively impact the existing wetland marsh and vernal pools. This sensitive area should be better protected, not paved over. Thank you in advance to the Placer County Planning Commission for your efforts to protect the natural resources of Placer County. By appealing this project, you will continue to do so and be leaders for other counties to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Berkama, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I too would like to support the appeal for the project. I think most importantly, what was mentioned, to take a programmatic EIR and add a checklist to it, does not go into the level of depth that's required to do justice to not only the environment, but to traffic in multiple areas. My, my concerns were, why was an EIR not done? I don't think there's been adequate response to that. There, there have been several things. Vernal pools should have triggered a significant impact. The scale and location should have triggered a, a significant impact with vehicle miles traveled. There should be more depth to the traffic there. The scale and location should have triggered one. Air quality standards, as Leslie mentioned, we currently equal, there was an article in the Roseville paper that said we currently equal LA's air quality. We haven't even begun with Sunset yet. I plead with you to consider what your life and your children's lives are going to be like when, when Sunset starts breaking ground. We already have that benchmark, so just in the grand scheme of things, to consider that. Does COG have a plan for dealing with this project? Working off a checklist is not a plan. I think there's a little more due diligence as required. Fires, we have already, we have a ballot measure for Placer County to address fire. We do not have, even in the Placer County Conservation Program, fire was mentioned, they've already added developer fees for fire. We have three of the largest fires in history going, and we have not, we're working off a checklist to say we can respond to fire. I think that is another reason for an EIR. The Placer County Conservation Program itself, several concerns were raised about the implementation of that program. This project appears to be the poster child for why we don't have adequate monitoring for a conservation program. The agencies, we don't have a citizens program in place yet. The timing of this program is problematic. It should have been a ticklet on the Sunset Area Plan. It's that large, and so to, to look at the mitigation and monitoring and not look at it from the conservation program is disingenuous. It doesn't, it doesn't meet the needs of the, of the people of Placer County, and I think that it, the significance of the size of this project should alone trigger that. And I hope you'll consider everything that you've heard today, that, that the vernal pools themselves should have triggered the EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other raised hands?
All right, there are no other raised hands, and there is no one on the phone. So at this time, we will close the public comment period on the project and bring them back to the commission if there are any further questions of the staff, the applicant, or the appellant.
Questions?
Yep, go ahead.
Sunset Industrial Plan apparently is being heard at the court at some time, as it sounds like. And so there's a checklist with the Sunset Industrial Plan in this document to take a look at the environmental view of it. And so I guess there's also the existing Sunset Industrial Plan. And so what really governs here? What are we dealing with in terms of governance of this particular project?
It was reviewed for consistency under the 2019 Sunset Area Plan, the adopted plan.
So how's the existence?
Yeah.
Can I say this?
No. I mean, we can hear you, but your mic is not on.
I'll go up to the...
So a couple of things. One, there is a lawsuit over the Sunset Area Plan project, but the mere filing of a lawsuit doesn't invalidate any of those entitlements that are approved by the board. The Sunset Area Plan approvals, they remain in full force and effect, and the county is allowed to process projects in accordance with those entitlements. And the only way that changes is if the court issues a ruling that somehow invalidates the county's action or puts a stay on things. Neither of those have occurred in this situation. So those approvals of the Sunset Area Plan from December of 2019 are valid and still in full force and effect, and that's, that is the case all the way through until the trial, until the court says, no, you can't do that. So that's the status that the Planning Commission, the board, is allowed to evaluate. So that's the status of the Planning Commission, the Board is allowed to evaluate any project consistent with the Sunset Area Plan, because that's, I guess, the status of the entitlements at this point. With respect to the project EIR requirement, under CEQA Guidelines Section 15183, which Callie had mentioned, that allows you to look at projects that are done in accordance with an approved Sunset Area Plan. And as long as that project meets the guidelines that are set forth in the area plan and doesn't have any specific effects or specific impacts that are peculiar to that project that were not analyzed in that larger area plan, then you can approve the project under Section 15183 as being consistent with that greater area plan. And there are requirements in the section as to findings that need to be made. Those are identified in the staff report. So there isn't a need for a project-specific EIR as long as there aren't any project-specific impacts that were not evaluated in the original EIR for Sunset Area Plan.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one more question.
Okay.
Okay. I think we heard that as far as the vernal pools and the wetlands, there's no net loss because the, I guess they'll be transferred to some other place in Placer County? Maybe you could explain that a little bit more completely.
I will do my best, and Lee Chavez is also available, and potentially she may be able to add some input. But in lieu, fee payments for mitigation is a very common form of mitigation. And it's my understanding that the Placer County Conservation Program would be accepting those fees in order to create and protect habitat off-site. So that is the mechanism that this project would be mitigating under, assuming, of course, that the PCCP is adopted by the agencies that need to do so. Otherwise, this project would be mitigating per standard regulatory agency requirements. And in some cases, that does include in lieu fee payment for mitigation. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I guess there's another step in here, isn't there? Where in the past, I guess it's been Fish and Wildlife would issue a take permit. But in this case, with the Placer County Conservation Plan, that may be a county body that does that. Or is that going to have to happen where there's, you know, where you do pavil over a wetland? Or is there a take permit process that's going to be put into force?
Lee, do you think you may be able to speak to that?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So there would be a take permit approval process. It would either occur under the PCCP if those permits have been issued, or it would occur independently if the PCCP is not up and running by the time those permits are necessary. It is possible, based on the acreage of impact, that the permits would be, the take permits would be issued directly by the resource agencies regardless, the wildlife agencies regardless. So U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So either way, there will be take permits issued.
Okay. So there was a review in this document, but there'll also be a subsequent review of those resources?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
By the wildlife agencies, correct?
Yes.
All right. Other?
No questions. I just have comments, but I'll wait till that.
So if there are no more questions at this time from the Commission, Mr. Garabedian, how about another five minutes? That would kind of bring you up to where you had asked for, to talk to the Commission.
Hi, this is Mike Garabedian, checking to see if I am being heard.
You're heard.
Thank you. Oh, seven or eight points here. First of all, I'd like to say that Placer County tomorrow views its job as helping the county do its job. And that's what we're here for. That's what our input is for, and that's how I hope it will be taken. I'll talk briefly about stormwater that has been mentioned. What has not been addressed, as far as we know, is the stormwater that goes through the site from Rockland. There's a, you can see it very easily, there's a waterway around the north and west of the Jessup property, and it goes right through this area. There is a large area between University Avenue and Highway 65 that is yet to develop with mixed-use housing. So there is increasing runoff from that that I don't think has been taken into account here. I'd like to see if it is. And also from the unpredictable nature of the development that will be on the other side, Highway 65 and in this area. Quite concerned about that. The mentioning the no net loss, the staff did not mention replacement. I think that up to 29%, that is one figure I've heard, up to 29% of the land, the wetlands and areas destroyed by this, there, almost a third of that would be replaced by rebuilding or recreating wetlands, like they're doing an experiment on in one of the areas, which is far less efficient than keeping the ones we have. The wetlands in this area are consistent with the industrial and commercial area there, and it should remain that way. I mentioned fire. There was a previous fire on the west, to this west of this property, and just a few days ago, a raging fire burned northward towards the property and was stopped at West, Sunset Boulevard West. You can go out and take a look. This is an area with key issues about that. CEQA is important. I'm glad that the county represents, understands CEQA's importance. That's about all they talk about. They are not talking about planning discretion in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. And that is your job, to make sure that all the other things besides CEQA have just as much importance. And that is why you need to bring the good planning to this that is absent, while all they in the scent environmental talk about are excuses made for all the development based on their interpretation, which we don't agree with, about the Sunset Area Plan. So to deal with this project, as I suggested before, means that you have to start first with the natural resource, with the ecology that is there, before anything is done with this. And this was a mistake of the Sunset Area Plan and the Placer, the Placer PCC program, is to assess that and see what the capabilities of the land are and what the resource needs. And there has been no alternative, seriously, meaningfully, et cetera, to keep the wetlands where they are as part of the process of looking at this and looking to alternative sites for this project, even within the Sunset Area Plan, but away from these valuable natural resources that perform these services, which are not just ecological, but they translate into economic and other services. Now, as a person trained in forestry, I know it's quite understandable that people understand that trees sequester carbon. Well, there's increasing research about especially natural grasslands and how much carbon they sequester. Some research suggests that natural grassland, the native grassland, sequester more carbon than forests. Looked at some of that research. That's been left out here. The fact that CEQA may not require it doesn't mean that it shouldn't be looked at. You, as resource managers, you as planning advisors to the Board of Supervisors in the county, should say, we feel, let's take a look at that. Let's get some understanding of what the carbon sequestration potential is, not just on the acreage here, but under this whole area. We need to understand what we're doing.
Mr. Garabedian, you're at about four and a half minutes, so could you wrap this up in about 30 seconds?
Well, yes. I think I'll close on transportation, which is the major thing here. There's a letter in the file from one of the state agencies referring to the need for a transportation study for this project. There's no doubt that with all the, serving the Northern California area as is proposed for it, there is going to be a lot of traffic going in all directions and coming and going, not just the 400 potential employees, changing to 500 supposedly, but for the deliveries and the comebacks of the delivery vehicles and so forth. This project needs that transportation study. Now, even if it isn't required by CEQA, for goodness sakes, it should be, as an alternative to understand what the impact is, this is a recommendation I hope you will seriously consider. Now, finally, this is going very quickly.
You're at about five and a half minutes. Could you just?
We suggest, in closing, that you should take this under advisement and figure out what kind of recommendation the Planning Commission should be making. This may be the most important decision by any of you now sitting on this commission, how you help the county deal with this project, which is precedent-setting, would be precedent-setting in a major way. Again, thank you for this opportunity. So glad to be here. I'm sorry we can't be there in person, and deeply regret that you are having this kind of meeting under COVID-19, which is part of the overall problem here, that the county is moving ahead very quickly with a half a dozen major projects that do not allow for the kind of public meeting that we should be having.
All right. Thank you so much.
This opportunity is important, and thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. One of the questions that came up was regarding storm drainage. So Callie, if you could discuss that?
Certainly. As noted, the Sunset Area Plan has a requirement for new development to retain projects at a 100-year, eight-day storm design to a depth of 10 and 3/4 inches. The project is proposing two stormwater basins totaling 11.8 acres. The drainage report prepared for the project demonstrates that these basins meet or exceed the requirements of the Placer County Storm Management Manual. In addition, Phil Franz may be able to add some more information, or if the project engineers want to add to what I've just said. But the drainage report clearly demonstrates that the project is compliant with Sunset Area Plan policies for drainage.
All right. Phil, did you have anything to add?
Sure. It was brought up about the, kind of, the drainage coming from the University William Jessup coming through the project site. There is a drainage way that comes from the university that ends up coming through the southern portion of the project site. The preliminary drainage report has looked at the future fully-developed and unmitigated 100-year floodplain associated with that drainage way, and the limits of that floodplain will be shown on the project improvement plans. And no development will be occurring in that area. And that does, again, it's the future fully-developed, unmitigated floodplain. So with any development that comes within this watershed, the limits are shown so that there will be no impacts from the project on that.
Thank you. Question? Yes?
Okay. I do have a question for the applicant, in that I think I read in the staff report somewhere that one of the basics for the selection of this particular site in California was the existence of a railhead. And so at any rate, you might talk a little bit about that, how that relates to the questions that come up with regards to a transportation study. Because I guess what I'm thinking is, if you have a railhead, that's probably going to be the primary way to get vehicles in and out of the site from other areas that you pick them up. Maybe you could address that.
Yes, I'd be happy to address that. We will actually not be utilizing the railhead. It does not come on to the portion of the parcel that we will be utilizing, i.e. the west side of the parcel. The railhead comes into the eastern part of the property, and we'll be subdividing off our portion that we're looking to obtain off the tax map parcel. That being said, we have done analysis nationwide, not just in California, on utilizing rail. The rule of thumb on utilizing rail is typically a 500-mile trip with multiple cars, railcars that are packed with automobiles. We do not have the luxury of being able to meet those accommodations at this point in time, so it is just not efficient for us to utilize rail, frankly, anywhere in the United States.
Okay. Well, thank you. You know, just cleared it up for me. I appreciate that.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the staff, or the applicant, or the appellant? If not, let's bring them back to the Commission for discussion then.
Well, as you recall, when the Sunset Area Plan came before us, I was the only Commission member that voted against it because I felt there was deficiencies in it that had some potential negative implications that really still needed to be addressed. But now that it's been approved by the Commission and then on to the Board of Supervisors, the, literally, the cake is baked, and we can't change the ingredients. So I believe that, I want to compliment Callie on her presentation and the staff's work on this. I believe it was very complete, and it addressed the issues as it applies to the Sunset Area Plan. I believe this complies.
All right. Other comments? All right. If not, is there a recommendation?
I will be glad to make a motion to deny the third-party appeal by Michael Garabedian of Placer County tomorrow.
Second. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
There was a first from Mr. Nader, and I believe the second was Mr. Cannon. So vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we determine the potential impacts of the Placer VIC are within the scope of the analysis of the 2019 certified SAP, P R S P E I R pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15183.
Second. We have a first and a second. Sue, roll call.
First from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon. So vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would finally move that we uphold the zoning administrator's approval of a Placer VIC minor use permit, T L N 20-0053, subject to the conditions attached herein to the staff report.
Second. We have a first and a second. Sue, call the roll.
Mr. Nader first, and a second from Mr. Cannon. So vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would finally move that we uphold the zoning administrator's approval of a site design review agreement.
Second. We have a first and a second. Sue, roll call, please.
Mr. Nader first, and Mr. Cannon second. So vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, the Planning Commission has denied the appeal. The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accommodated by a filing fee of $619. With that, I want to thank everyone for their participation. The meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.